Hello.
Hello.
And we will, um, we will open the meeting, um, the Paul Pratt Memorial Library Board of Trustees, July 13th at 6:00 PM. Um, we'll start with a roll call. Carolyn Coffey here. Um, if you will, I'll say your first name. Just say your full name in here. Uh, Steve?
Steve Brown here.
Elaine?
Elaine Breslow, present.
Brooke?
Brooke Tool here.
Alex?
Alex Viteri here.
All right. Um, the first thing on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Did everyone have a chance to read them? Are there any questions or comments? And if not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Somebody second?
Brooke has seconded. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Uh, the minutes are unanimously approved. Um, and I'm sure you guys all know the reason that I'm running the meeting is because Catherine unfortunately is under the weather. So, um, we will wish her the best and Megan, take it away.
Great. Thank you. Let me share my screen. Here we go. Okay. Um, so we're excited that we've beginning the beginning of our fiscal year. So the, the coffers have been, uh, refilled, which is exciting. Uh, we did end up giving back actually quite a bit of money, um, for FY22 through our personnel line. Um, and we think that's just because of we had some staff turnover. We had staff that, um, uh, retired that were, were at the top tier and we hired, of course, at the, uh, lower tier. So, um, there was some money left over, um, and given back to the town. Um, and speaking of turnover, we have, um, two new staff members coming on board. Um, we sent an offer letter today that we have not received back. So I won't be talking about the library tech position quite yet, um, but we are welcoming our new young adult librarian. Her name's Alison Tavani and, uh, she'll be joining us on August 1st. She had some really wonderful ideas about how to work with the community and get teens in the door. Um, one of them that I really loved was, uh, making like tie fleece blankets for the Situate Animal Shelter so that the, um, teens could get community service and you know, I think all, everybody likes to help out animals. Um, so it was just an appealing, fun project. Um, and she had a lot of ideas like that and how we could kind of become more ingrained in the fabric of our community. And that's exactly what we're looking for. So, um, we're excited to have her. She just moved here from Georgia two weeks ago. Um, her husband has been here for a few months. He, um, um, is an architect working in Quincy. Um, she's just finishing up her library degree. Um, and I think she's going to be a really excellent fit. We are in the, so as I said, we're in the final stages of, um, hiring a new full-time library technician and we will talk about that more in August. I'm hoping that both of these, uh, new employees will join us at our next, um, August trustee meeting for a few minutes, um, which, um, I believe will be in person and we can talk about that a little bit later. Um, Brooke, Alex and I are about to discuss, um, the strategic plan survey, just identified some, some trends, um, talked about our strategy moving forward. Um, and we've had some emails back and forth about meeting again, um, coming up soon. So that project's moving forward. Uh, summer reading kickoff has been as successful as it always is. Um, Sharon Moody's just absolutely fantastic. Um, so it's, we had a kickoff in June 27th, the Kona Ice came food truck. Um, it was a little rainy that day. Uh, actually it was very rainy. It was downpours and we still had a huge crowd, which is impressive. Um, so it still went off very, very well and we continue to have our, our Tuesday afternoon, um, programs at four o'clock. And as always, they're bringing in a hundred plus people. Um, we did have to have pumpernickel puppets indoors on Tuesday because it was windy enough that the Marionettes, um, weren't going to work out, out, outdoors. So we were able to bring everybody into our shared space with recreation and it worked out very well. And I do want to mention and thank Recreation because they were very quick to pivot their summer program, um, out of that room and you know, figure out something else that they could do so that we could use it. So thank you to Recreation. That was very kind. It was great.
That's a nice compliment to you, Megan.
Oh, thank you. Um, it was just, um, it was really, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to move things last minute, um, and they did it and they, and it was great. So, um, that was nice. Um, the biggest news we have besides, um, our new staff members is our library website is up for a free refresh with Civic Plus. Um, so I wanted to discuss the process of that a little bit. I know the trustees were very involved, um, in a subgroup when we first did our website before, before I started. Um, and I was hoping the board would consider thinking about letting the staff and I work together on this project and present drafts to the board as we go. Um, with new staff members and kind of our, our diverse range of skills, uh, we really haven't been able to work on a project together as an entire staff. And I just think that this project really lends itself to a lot of different skillsets and that, you know, everyone on the team would have, you know, a specialty that they could bring to the table. And I just think it would be a nice way for everybody to bond as well. Um, so I was hoping, um, the board could talk for a minute about whether that would be acceptable and if they would, or if, and/or there was another way that we could, um, work out, um, that process. That would be great for everybody.
I think it's wonderful if you can get the whole staff involved.
I agree.
Second that.
I think it's a great idea. I'm excited to see what you'll come up with.
What's the timing of the refresh?
I'm sorry?
What's the timing of the refresh?
Um, it's a slow process. To be honest, I just finished it with town. Well, I'm just about to finish it with the town hall website. Um, so it did took, it took about two years for the town hall website. I will say though, because of there was COVID, there were staff turnover on our side. There were staff turnover on their side. Um, so I don't anticipate it's going to take that long for us. Um, so I'm hoping by January or February, we should be through the process. Um, I've also been through it before now, so I understand what to anticipate and what the next step is. Um, so I think it'll be a little bit more seamless than it was with the, the town hall project.
I, I just wanted to say that unfortunately, you know, this, this platform doesn't lend itself to a lot of creativity, let's just say. So, um, I certainly would be very interested in seeing how, well, first of all, I've always, as you know, I'm like, if we don't keep changing and updating content, people just don't come. Uh, so I, I will be very happy to see what younger people are thinking and how that might parlay within the limitations of, as I say, the platform, which is a very, you know, um, municipal leaning in entity. And so, you know, having great pictures and more of that, I think I certainly would welcome that and more engagement type of things. Um, you know, again, whether, certainly the staff knows what patrons and you know, young parents and older demographics are looking for, you know, simplicity and it's got to be clear. And if I want to get this, how do I find that? Um, and I know just having been involved initially with, you know, this new creation of a website, because the old website was even worse if we.
I remember it.
Yeah. So it would be great to bring it into the next, into the future, if we can do that within the confines of what this product allows. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, I, you know, I've learned a lot over the course of working on the town hall website. Um, and so it's, it expanded, you know, by my horizons on, you know, the, how much it can, how, um, how much you can edit and how much you can move things around. And it is limited, but at least I feel like it's less limited than when I, before I learned it. So, um, I'm hoping that, uh, we'll be able to come up with something really nice. I'll also mention that, um, we are working on getting a quote from Jason Conforti, who, um, as all of you know, uh, did, uh, help, uh, tech help drop in, um, when he was in high school. Um, he's now at the Savannah College of Art and Design and, um, he's back for the summer and he's taking, uh, kind of stock, oh, therapies is here, excuse me. Um, stock photos, if you will, of the entire town. And I did ask him to also, um, come in and do some professional photos of the library, inside the library. Um, and he's also looking to do, he did our drone video before I started too. I don't know if you all remember that. Um, so he actually has his drone license. He's going to be doing some, um, things around town as well that we can incorporate, uh, into our website. And that is all on the tab of the town hall. So, um, so that'll be helpful. I think that'll bring our website into like a little bit more of a professional look. It's a little bit, I mean, yeah, I just, it's a little bit, um, we have too many flyers and not enough kind of more professional looking content. So, um, so we'll be trying to do that.
So what's the process, uh, that you envision this going through in terms of like, what are the different, what are the different, uh, stages, checkpoints, if you will, or, or that you would, you would bring this to life in?
Sure. Um, so we meet with Civic Plus and the first thing we have to do is we have this giant form we have to fill out and it's, um, the, I think the biggest part to me is identifying libraries, websites that we like. Um, and so we go through that and then we meet with them and we talk about like why we like certain aspects of each ones of the, the website and why those fit into our scope as well. And they go back and they essentially create an outline of a design and they bring it back to us. And then we, you know, critique or make changes as we go. Um, and so we kind of present, they present a draft and we kick it back. Um, kind of reminds me a little bit of like a design process for the outdoor space. Um, and then, and then they kind of give us a final draft. Uh, we are in charge of the backend. So once they provide the final draft before the two sites are integrated, the content of the old site into the new site, we have to make sure that it's, um, seamless. The keywords are there so that the search feature works and, um, kind of clean up anything that we need to clean up so that when it integrates, um, hopefully there'll be some minimal, uh, cleanup work there.
How much involvement do you have with the staff of Civic Plus?
Um, so I meet with, well, we meet with them like every other month, depending on what phase that we're at. So they'll present a design. We all sit down together and meet, um, talk. Um, we talk about, so we have a project manager and then we have a designer. So we have two staff members from their, uh, group that will sit with us through the, through each meeting.
I was just, uh, responding to Elaine's comments. Glassdoor, if you're familiar with Glassdoor, which writes the work environment, Civic Plus, very, very low reviews. So it sounds like it would be really important that the people that we end up working with are not really turned off and tired, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. And you know, that doesn't surprise me, Steve, because there has been some staff turnover there. Um, so this is a free refresh that they're providing for us, but if we want to do a different provider, different website, um, you know, that I'm open to that. It would be on our dime to launch a new website. Um, so that could be something we could plan for the future, or we could make a plan to kind of just hold off and, you know, maybe budget for next year to, um, entertain another vendor. Um, I know the town is, uh, would prefer that we use Civic Plus. Um, Elder Affairs is working with Civic Plus right now. They're building their very first website. Um, they never had a, a kind of what they're calling a child website, which is what we have. Um, so they're building that right now. Um, so I don't know how easy it would be for us, um, with the town to, to part from Civic Plus, but I don't think it's impossible. And if that's something we want to entertain, I'm happy to advocate for it.
I was just thinking if it, it would be really important if you were not at all satisfied or happy with the people that you were working with, that it could save a lot of pain and anguish.
It's true.
I think free sounds good though. Um, so I think that's, I mean, that, that makes sense to me. I, I, I agree that, you know, I think that the insight's great, Steve. I think you're absolutely right. Again, we shouldn't, can't be a painful process, but I think the, the part of it is the preparation, right? Like it's, it's truly understanding what is, that you're motivated by with other library sites or what is it that, what audience are we trying to, trying to, um, trying to appeal to? What stories are we trying to tell? What, where do we want to drive people? Where's the current site currently? Um, you know, where's the traffic going currently? Where do we want to divert them to? All those things I think is, it's about preparation more so. And I think that's where my question was going was what, what does the preparation look like? Um, because if not, it, nothing's going to work. Nothing, I mean, it's not going to go, the process isn't going to get smoothly. So, um, that would be the only part, part that I would be happy to, um, lend a hand on. Um, but again, just more so because I do this for a living. Um.
Great. Um, so we do statistics, Alex, about what, uh, pages people click on, but to be very honest, I probably understand half of what they're indicating in the, you know, in the report. So I would be excited to share it with you and you can maybe tell me what the rest of it means.
Yeah. And when I say I, you know, I do this for a living, my agency does this for a living. I don't actually, I'm not the expert on it because, but I do have a team of people that do. So I can be happy to share with you processes and, and, and be happy to share with you my knowledge of the reporting and I'd be happy to look at anything you want to, want to share with me. I, I don't want to make this over complicated by any stretch of the imagination. I just want to make it hopefully easier. Um, but.
Well, we want it to work. If we're going to do a nice staff, you know, team project like this, uh, success is important because at the end, the staff as a team doesn't feel satisfied with our product, then it's actually done the opposite of what, what we're intending for it to do, which is to bring everybody together and, and feel like they've accomplished something really important together.
You know what sort of analytics, um, they would provide?
Yeah. So they, it's a, it's, um, is what I've looked at Steve, for the most part is click rates and, and how quickly somebody clicks off a page and how often somebody clicks on a page and, and how they get there. So, you know, some people will just, you know, put the library's website in directly into their URL, or they might go through the town halls website first and click on library and then it goes to our website. So there's numbers for all that type of activity to tell you kind of how people, um, I also have our Google analytics that will tell us too, where people are coming from and, and how, you know, um, like what searches they're using to find us. Like, um, most of the time people aren't searching for Paul Pratt Memorial Library. They put in Cohasset Library and that's how we come up. Um, so, uh, just little anecdotes like that, um, are helpful when we start to, um, create our keywords and things like that throughout our pages and placement of pages as well, of course.
I think, Alex, if you could, um, you know, just help Megan take advantage of this at the start.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally open to that. And I can even share with you the questionnaire that we, um, send, that we meetings, my company sends to, uh, clients, kind of to ask them about, you know, it's a, it's a survey, if you will, a user survey. So, uh, happy to share that with you and any, any kind of tools that we can, we can provide. So, yep, more than happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Thank you, Alex. Well, that sounds great. So, um, so you will start working with the staff and involve Alex as need be. And then, um, you know, whatever we can do to support you or help you in that endeavor, just let us know. Is there anything more in your report that you want to cover?
Um, the only other thing is the, uh, link at the bottom is a article from the New York Times talking about banned books and, and the exhaustion of librarians, um, through this kind of national situation that we talked about last meeting, um, where people are feeling empowered to, to challenge certain types of books. And, um, um, knock on wood, you know, we have been, um, very lucky, uh, at the amount of attention that we've received. So, um, so just some, some light reading before you go to sleep.
Not so much. All right. Thank you very much. Um, next thing on the agenda is the bills. Bronwyn, is there anything that you wanted to point out?
So, um, we've got two warrants this month. Um, the first one is the June B and actually Catherine has already, um, signed off on that. So that's been submitted. Um, there wasn't really anything that I was just looking at that seemed too unusual, mostly just wrapping up the, the final bills to come in for the materials. Um, that warrant did have the, um, the survey charge with, um, John Cavanero, which we charged to the Music Circus Grant. And, um, other than that, just pretty basic, um, you know, the usual things. Uh, so that one has to get voted and then we have the first warrant of the new fiscal year. Uh, that's always got the OCLN, um, large payment to remain in the network. Um, ProQuest, we have our ancestry renewal. We have our, uh, consumer reports, online renewal, a couple of museums, basically. Uh, I don't think there was anything to, oh, the today's business solution is for our wireless printing. That's an annual charge for that. So, uh, those are the things that I had on my report. Um, I think I included what we brought in for, um, donations for the year. Um, that's just on my accounting report. And we did get, just get the word about this, the CLT takeout because Paul, I don't know if everyone knows that Paula is leaving in two weeks. Um, which is not going to be great for us because she knew, uh, a lot about the CLT. And so hopefully they'll get a good replacement for her. Anybody has any questions? I'm happy to walk through anything.
I just had a quick question. I mean, it's not a, not a big number, but, um, I noticed the OCLN number was off from what we had been allocated by a couple hundred bucks. Um, did we, did we not get the number in time for the budgeting process and guess or, or what?
Well, they usually, that's done, they give us a ballpark idea back.
Um, so actually, uh, OCLN had made a mistake, um, early on in their budgeting and we did have to vote to make that change passed when we had submitted our budget. So everyone's, all the 27 libraries, um, were given a wrong budget number previously, unfortunately. And so we voted to, to make that, to make that change. Um, and then it'll be reflected in.
Too. By that point, we'd already submitted and had approved our budgets. It was too late to.
Right.
Sometimes it works the other way. I think last year it was.
Yeah. Last year we had $1,900 extra.
So unfortunately this year, not, not so great, but.
Yeah. Um, I think they're gonna, it's going to be reflected in next year's, um, assessment, um, to make up for it. And so that's unfortunate, but it's okay.
Um, did anyone have any questions or comments on the, uh, on the bills? And, um, if not, could I have a motion to approve both the June B and the July warrant?
So moved. Second.
Um, uh, this, this one will do a roll call vote. Um, I'll say your name and if you will say your vote. Uh, welcome Megan Brinsey.
Hi. Oh, yes, I wrote, yes.
Sarah Peace?
Yes.
Elaine Breslow?
Aye.
Alex Viteri?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Carolyn Coffey, yes. Okay. Um, next thing on the agenda is the chair's report and the chair is not here. Um, so there's not really a report. Um, I guess this is probably as good a place as any to say that there's no real update on the outdoor programming space. Um, Chris was on vacation. I did, uh, try and reach him today to see where things are. We had a, um, mix-up where we thought he had the survey and he did not yet. So we lost a few weeks. He finally reached out and he was like, oh, is the survey done? And we're like, what? So, um, so hopefully we'll connect with him and, uh, try and plan another, uh, meeting for an update in the next couple of weeks. And, um, other than that, we'll go to the next thing on the agenda, which I can't even remember anymore. Can you believe it? Um, the CLT report, um, as Bronwyn said, um, Paula is resigning, but, um, did give us the, uh, takeout number. It hasn't been approved by the CLT board yet. So it's, um, but the, the good news is despite the fact that the market has pummeled the, um, the balance of the endowment, the market three years ago also pummeled the balance of the endowment. Um, and it was worse three years ago than it is now. So the takeout looks, um, like it'll be, uh, it's not going to go down as much as, uh, it will, won't go down, that it's going to be above level. Um, but, uh, but the, the balance of the endowment is down to like, to about $1.7 million, um, having been up as high as 2.2 at one point. But the same thing happened during COVID and hopefully over time it will come back. Um, the other thing to announce is that Bob Riley, uh, I think felt, um, very appreciated at his event and has decided that he will not chair the Investment Advisory Committee, uh, any longer. Um, he has recommended Steve Bobo to, um, take his place and the CLT board has approved that change. So, um, I think, uh, Bob will lead the August meeting or at least introduce Steve as the new, um, leader at the August CLT meeting. Um, and he will remain on the Investment Advisory Committee, but, um, will not chair it. Uh, and he has offered, um, some of the resources that he has provided for the benefit of the organization for at least a little while going forward. So, um.
That's really very, I just wanted to comment. That is very nice because Mary has done a superb job.
Yes.
Serving on the investment subcommittee and providing really useful information so that all the participants can, um, help. So that's wonderful.
Agreed. Um, so that's it for the CLT. Uh, there hasn't been a meeting, so that's all been offline stuff. If, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Okay. And the next thing would be the Friends report. Um, is anyone doing the Friends now or is that still Catherine? Catherine?
Yeah, still Catherine.
And they, and they haven't met over the summer anyway. So.
No, I, I do have one thing to report though, and it's the bins. Uh, uh, so we just got our first takeout. Um, sorry, not takeout, I'm using CLT words. Uh, we just got our first collection of, um, the two bins that they have put in place. So now there's one at the Stop and Shop and there's one behind the library and it was in the 700s, um, that they made for this quarter. So, um, the bins are working out.
The Stop and Shop bin is awesome. The only problem is all that construction is, is kind of blocking it right now, but that's like, that's short-lived, I hope.
Yeah, I hope so too.
Aye. And I think that's it on the agenda unless anyone else had something they wanted to, um, bring up?
Well, there was one point about, uh, the Friends. Catherine had asked, uh, had floated the idea of having a different trustee, uh, sit in on each meeting to broaden the awareness of what the Friends are doing. So it'd be interesting if anybody would volunteer to do that or likes the idea.
Yep. I like the idea. Now I'd be happy to do that. Um, I wasn't sure if I could do it every month. Um, so I'm sort of.
Didn't we talk about like alternating it to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like I, if we can alternate, I'm happy to help. I just, similarly, I've got a lot on my plate with some other things and I can't do monthly.
Right. I don't know if it would be too, um, tricky to have like everyone, you know, do it. The main thing is like two or three people that can rotate. I don't know where we came. I, I think we put it, the idea on pause since they're not meeting in the summer and it was kind of like we would readdress that in August or September, but, um.
I'm sure, I'm sure Catherine will follow up, um, as the first Friends meeting gets scheduled and, um, but that's great. Thanks. Thanks for, um, offering to help in that regard.
Yeah. Yeah. That'd be fun.
Is there anything else? And if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Carolyn, thanks, Megan.